I'd like to call this special meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 25, 2022. It is 6:11. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Heather is running a little bit late, so I will do the roll call. We have Ms. Darling and Mr. Claffey who are calling in on the telephones. Do we have any objection to them calling in?
No.
Seeing a lot of head nodding or shaking. So, no, we have consensus that it's okay. All right. So, present, Ms. Darling.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Gilio.
Here.
Ms. Raymond will be here in a minute. Ms. Lamphier.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
And Ms. Bishop is here. Present also, we have Ms. Carey from HR on School District. And we have Barrett Christina and Will Peterson from the New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Phillips.
Phillips, sorry. Okay, so I will turn this meeting over to you guys.
Great. Thank you very much, Jen. Thank you, members of the National Board of Education. Barrett Christina from the School Boards Association, again with our staff attorney, Will Phillips. We thank you for inviting us down to provide a refresher course on roles and responsibilities. We did this a couple of years ago for the board for the first time in a while. So, we have a packet of materials. We have the PowerPoint. The packet itself is, I don't know, 60 pages long or so. We're not going to go through, obviously, every word and every page. And this training is just to provide some sort of broad-based overview of New Hampshire laws relative to school board governance, New Hampshire laws relative to administrative management, and hopefully impart some best practices as to where the board's governance roles and the administrative roles or management roles intersect and meet, and hopefully, you know, provide some information relative to, again, good governance and good management to help the district run smoothly. I think, Will, were you going to do the first section? I think we're starting. If you're looking at the packet...
No, it's not in the packet.
It's on page nine, isn't it? Page seven?
No, it's not.
This, starting...
Yeah, but we're going on.
Okay, so we're just going to be working primarily from the PowerPoint, I guess, then. Sorry about that.
The same thing is up there, right?
Yeah.
I'll just pass this out.
Okay, thank you. And don't forget your mic there, Will.
Good evening, everyone. Just a little bit of a start. You did receive two packets, two lengthy documents, and I just thought I'd introduce those.
Thank you.
So, the first one is School District Governance and Responsibilities. We're not going to be working off of that, but I just, I think there's some slides in the slide deck that we're about to do. And when they refer to pages in a handout, they're referring to the pages in the Item B on that, in that bigger packet, so the roles and responsibilities for New Hampshire School Board. So, if you did want to read more about a particular thing or see particular rules or so forth, that would be in that large packet. And then the other packet is a combination of things, items, the NHSBA has relative to the right-to-know law and meetings. We may touch on those at the end of the presentation if we have time. But the main presentation tonight is right up here, the roles and responsibilities for New Hampshire School Boards. The presentation is divided into multiple sections. And in order to make the best sense out of questions and answers, what we'll do when we go from one section to the next is we'll pause and we'll ask for questions at that point relative to that topic. And that way, we, you know, hopefully can get through all of the materials. So, the first items that we start with are a couple of core principles that apply to school boards and what school boards are and might not be. And the two core principles are governance, not management, and collective authority, not individual. Governance, not management. So, this is just a sort of an easy way of maybe referencing back, you know, what is the function of the school board? It's not the board's job to run the schools, but to see that they are run well. Your board sets the vision and the goals of the district and helps fulfill them through oversight of the administration. The administration, on the other hand, implements the visions and the goals of the board, manages the operations of the district and its schools, and advises the board regarding legal obligations, practical considerations, policy, budget, et cetera. So, it's a, you know, that last piece suggests that circular relationship. And we'll find that in different places throughout some of the other slides that we have. So, the board creates the box in which the superintendent, well, the board and applicable statutes and regulations creates the box in which the superintendent manages your district. But it's the superintendent and the administration that are doing the day-to-day affairs of the district and implementing the board's policies and vision. So, just some examples of the difference of the interplay between those two dominions. And we're referring to here, when you see that ED 30301 or ED 30202, those are the Department of Education rules. And there are two rules right at the beginning of ED three sections. The first one's the 303 are all the rules pertaining to the duties of a school board. And then 30202 are all the duties relating to the, I mean, all the rules regarding the duties of the superintendent. So, the first one...
Let me interject real quick, Will. Unless you have a different handout than what I have, I want to apologize. Where the slide says handout pages four and 11 in the previous one, I think that may be inaccurate. We apologize. We tinker with this document all the time. It may just have, something didn't get changed or switched over.
Sure.
Do I have that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we apologize for that. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention because Will mentioned there were some corresponding numbers. So, we apologize for that.
I think if you add three to the numbers, you end up at the right one. So, instead of page four, it's page seven.
Right.
And that's because we combined them all into one big packet.
Yeah.
So, for personnel, the rule pertaining to school boards, "Adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the recruitment, employment, evaluation, and dismissal of teachers and other employees." So, that's your function as school board, is to adopt policies relative to these things. And then you look at the corresponding rules, and there's two of them for the superintendent's duties. First one is, and this, you know, this is the nomination and election process that they're all familiar with, that happens generally in March and April. The superintendent nominates all certified staff and appoint other employees in accordance with state law, the rules of the state board, and school board policy. So, remember, the school board's function, adopt the policies regarding how that's done. And then the superintendent carries that function out in accordance with those policies and applicable statutes. But then the superintendent has this next one, which is Paragraph B 30202B. And if I say ED, that just means a Department of Ed rule. "Direct and supervise the work of all employees of the district or districts." And it goes even further than that. "And shall have all the powers necessary to make such directed direction effective." So, remember, going back to what is the board's function relative to personnel, it's to adopt policies. And that would include, you know, the staffing levels and so forth. And then it's the superintendent's job to, number one, you know, follow the board's policies, but number two, direct, directly supervise the employees of the district. And then for fiscal matters, same type of approach. 30301B, "Adopt policies necessary and desirable to control and effectuate the purchase of equipment." And going through that, it's all the fiscal elements of the school district and what it's using its money for, equipment, personnel, or services. And then, school, to make fiscal... And then it allows the superintendent to delegate certain components, usually to the business administrator and the HR. Then the next one that school boards have is prepare an annual budget in accordance with RSA 32. That's probably not correct because of your city charter. But the school board generally has the obligation to be preparing the main fiscal document, at least starting point, for the school district. And then when you look over in the superintendent's function, it's be responsible for the selection and purchase of the textbooks and all other stuff. So, the superintendent is carrying out the fiscal directions of the school board, which the school board has done through the adoption of policies. Barrett will talk about policies a little later. But policy doesn't necessarily mean the thing that you put in your manual as a permanent, you know, a permanent document. But it's also the policy decisions that you make every time you have a vote. Other than when you're acting in a judicial capacity, which we'll get to later, all of your little decisions are an expression of policy. It's the policy of the district as determined by the school board. And then the next piece relative to fiscal matter, and it relates, again, to, directly to the school board's function, is be responsible for developing and recommending to the school board, blah, 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 the annual budget. So, remember when we looked at that first slide, that very last piece was give advice to the school board. So, superintendent's job is, in a sense, two-part. One, it's to implement the policies of the board. But the second one is to actually provide advice and assistance to the board. And this is expressed very clearly in that, you know, you look on the board side in the Paragraph E and then look at the superintendent's side in the Paragraph D. And you both have this joint responsibility to prepare the budget. Just another place where you see this type of thing, the relationship between management and governance. In the ED section regarding the boards, "In consultation with the superintendent and in accordance with the statutes and rules of the state board, determine the educational goals of the district. And then the school board shall require the implementation of the educational programs designed to reflect the goals and objectives." So, that's, in a sense, the oversight of the administration in carrying out those educational goals and objectives as established by the school board. On the superintendent's side, "Be responsible for the development of an educational plan, including the curriculum." And then goes into, you know, much greater detail. But it's also in accordance with local school board policies, state statutes, and state board rules. So, again, you've got the school board establishing the framework through policy and then also establishing the educational goals for the district. And the superintendent's responsibility is, number, whoop, I don't think I did that. The superintendent's responsibility is develop the curriculum plan and then also carry out and make effort to meet the goals and objectives that are established by the school board. Even though this says, note that the development of the educational plan, including curriculum, and the one before that, remember, was the superintendent was supposed to be purchasing the textbooks. The school board still approves the budget. The school board still has oversight relative to fiscal matters. So, the superintendent might be responsible for developing the curriculum, but it's going to be, it needs to be consistent with the school board's educational goals and so forth. And then also consistent with the budget that's approved by the district. So, that was the first one, the governance, not management. And then the second core...
Are there any questions about that?
Oh, sure. Were there any questions?
Questions about that? Yes, sir.
Ms. Ziem.
Any questions about the first few slides, Ms. Ziem?
Yes, this is probably simple. If it comes into conflict or into challenge, which one takes the authority? The EDs, which I think are statewide, or the city charter?
Generally, it's going to be the city charter. But I don't want to pretend to, you know, be an expert on the Nashua City Charter. But I think it's going to depend on the nature of the statute. So, for instance, if state law and the Department of Education said that, you know, you have to study thus and such, and the city charter said something different, I would expect that the state law would take priority. But I, you know, again, I'm not going to pretend to be a...
An example on that, Will, if you could go back to a couple of slides where it says the school board shall develop the budget in accordance with RSA 32. So, RSA 32 is, relates to towns and town school districts. So, this rule says prepare an annual budget in accordance with RSA 32. We'll presume that your city charter is in full compliance with the law. So, while this says you have to prepare a budget within accordance of RSA 32, because, and there are various places in the law, just where it doesn't always quite match up clean, you're preparing a budget in accordance with your city charter or perhaps other rules, you know, of the city. So, in this regard, your charter would take precedent because you still have an obligation to prepare the budget. It's just not within the context of RSA 32. RSA 32, there are, I'm sure you have, I'm sure there are similarities. You have budget hearings and certain dates by which certain budget aspects need to be done and so on and so forth. Those would all be, I presume, again, because I haven't reviewed your charter, are all within, you know, your charter or rules of the city, or things of that nature.
So, yeah, I think there's, what, 13 cities? And there's four different, at least four different...
Turn your mic.
It's on.
Okay, sorry.
Four different approaches that each, that the cities have. So, some cities have, you know, their city-dependent school districts. And then others, they have completely, they look more like a town district. So, the city of Keene, for instance, has an annual meeting, just like a town does. So, you know, we can only talk in generalities about that part of it. I think your budget statute is, it's going to be 33, I think. Or is that finance? Anyway. But when it, when you're, if the question is, what's the hierarchy of statutes and so forth, your local board policies are going to be subordinate to your charter. Your charter, in many places, is going to be independent of state statutes. But in the absence of a specific provision in your charter, it's going to be dependent on the state statutes. So, it really is a question of, you know, studying your city charter and determining where it might diverge from state law.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the sort of governance-management part? So, the other element that's core to really being part of a school board and an individual member of a school board is that school boards operate as a collective authority. School board acts only as the collective body acting upon a will of a majority of its members. The only inherent authority under current New Hampshire law of a school board member is to deliberate and vote at duly-called meetings. Everything else that a school board member has is either the same as an individual citizen or dependent on a majority vote of the school board. So, that last one, the blue circle, a board can delegate some of its authority to an individual member. The most commonplace, or the, you know, the common role, is the designation of a school board chair. When you elect a school board chair, what you're doing is delegating to the school board chair certain responsibilities. Those are probably spelled out in a district policy, but the general, there are three general historical, traditional functions of a school board chair. One is to preside over the school board meeting. It would be, you know, kind of chaotic if you didn't have somebody who was presiding over the meeting. The second one is to sign things or act as the spokesperson for the school board. Sometimes a school board might delegate certain spokesperson functions to other members. So, if you have a building project, you might have, instead of the chairperson speaking as the spokesperson for the board, but a member of the building committee or what have you. But then the third function of a school board chair, or the chair of any real body, is setting the agenda for the board's meetings. That typically is done in concert with, and by typically, I mean, in most school districts, it's done in concert with the superintendent. The superintendent generally, or the administration, is generally preparing a draft agenda and then reviewing that with the chair to develop a, you know, an efficient meeting plan for the next board meeting. The other thing that happens in that process is, and this is where, you know, some right-to-know law sort of mechanics are important. Right-to-know law requires that whenever you have a discussion of substantive matters among a quorum of your board, whether that's done via email or text message or in-person telephone, whenever you have a quorum discussion of jurisdictional matters, that has to be at a duly-called meeting. So, the only time you can discuss these types of matters is sitting here at this table. But how would you be able to plan the next meeting? So, you delegate to a person, that's the chairperson typically, and the chairperson works with the superintendent. Now, what happens if something comes up in between meetings that, you know, the superintendent's not sure what they're supposed to do? Superintendent will call the chair, and the chair is going to decide, do I need to call an emergency meeting? Do I need to call a special meeting? Or can this be placed on the agenda until the next meeting? So, there's certain things that happen between meetings with the chairperson. That's part of what you delegated to the chair, the agenda-setting. Those conversations are agenda-setting-type things. So, the collective authority of the school board, school board acts as a collective body acting upon the will of a majority of the members, can delegate some of its authority. But the only inherent authority that you have when you're elected is to come sit at the school board meetings and discuss when it's time for the board to discuss and vote when it's time to vote. And that's the thing that sets you apart from the people who sit over there. Any questions about, yes, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I want to get back to the right-to-know with the emails. So, if an email goes out...
Yep.
Yeah?
Do you want to do this? I'm, we can do that now, but I was going to try to put right-to-know stuff at the end. But ask that because it does relate to what I just talked about.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. So, if an email goes out from one board member to the other eight board members, does that constitute a meeting at this point on a subject?
It depends on the nature of the conversation.
If it's pertinent to existing school board business, I would say that the New Hampshire Supreme Court has not decided that particular question. But what I can say is, you certainly introduced the three indicia. So, I kind of suggested three prongs. One is a quorum. Second one is you're able to communicate contemporaneously. That's the language from the statute. So, I mean, really, the only thing that wouldn't allow for contemporaneous communication is snail mail. Smoke signals, yep, you can do it simultaneously. You can walk up and talk to somebody, all those things. And then even when you can't communicate contemporaneously, if you do it in sequence, that can also trigger the right-to-know law. So, back to that, three prongs. First is quorum. Second one is contemporaneous communication. And the third one is a jurisdictional matter. So, something that's within the supervisory or jurisdictional control of the board. So, if one board member sends an email to the rest of the board, then you've triggered all three of those. And it would seem to me that you're coming very close to, you know, you need to have that discussion in a meeting. I would say that the Supreme Court has not decided that particular question. If, if the matter is more, so let's say you're reading the, you know, The Washington Post and you see an article about education, and you think it's interesting, and you forward it to the rest of the board. That probably is not something that would trigger it because it's not, you're just sharing information that's not specific to your district. So, that one's a little safer. There, you know, there's some do's and don'ts about emails that, you know, are a different conversation, and maybe we can get into them later.
Yeah, just to add on to that a little bit, which is why Will explained it perfectly. Part of it's going to be about the nature of the communication. There is guidance in the Attorney General's right-to-know law memorandum from whenever the last time they published it a couple of years ago. That says emails that are ministerial do not trigger the meeting requirement. So, for example, if you had to hold an extra meeting or an emergency meeting or a special meeting, the board chair would have presumably authority to send out an email asking for everybody's availability to schedule a meeting. But relative to Will's example, if, you know, if the board member sends out a news article that they found online, just as an FYI, we'll agree, that's probably not going to trigger the quote-unquote "meeting" aspect. But if the second board member then replies and says, this is very interesting, and the third board member replies and says, you know, I disagree with all of that article, you're getting into the conversation, the deliberation, the communication, that would trigger the right-to-know law and would be an improper meeting because it wasn't posted, it wasn't noticed, things of that nature. So, there's some, you know, it's very fact-specific based on what the content of the emails is, the purpose of the emails, and how, you know, why people are engaging in the conversation and communication.
I guess the answer is be very careful what you send out by email. So, if you want to just send a news article, send it out and say, no comments, please.
With no editorializing about it.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess the other piece to that is, I don't know what your agenda policy looks like. Many school districts have, the school board members, unlike the public, have the ability to have things put on an agenda. So, if you have something like that and you would like to engage the rest of the board, the best place to do that is to send it to the superintendent and ask that it be placed on the agenda. And the superintendent can actually disseminate information to the board in a way that board members can't. So, there's, you can't use the superintendent to circumvent the right-to-know law, but it is appropriate for, you want the superintendent to keep you informed and to make sure that you have the materials you need for an effective board meeting. So, you're going to get information from the board member, I mean, from the superintendent. And that's really the conduit that you should try to use when you have something that you want the board to discuss.
Any other questions, though, before we move on?
One of the things that was requested of me when I stepped into this role was to give the board kind of a weekly update on my comings and goings. Is that, Ms. Ziem, I'm kind of looking at you about this because this was your request, wanting more of kind of a comings and goings of what I've been doing all week in regards to the board, right?
Well, not, mine was more when you meet with the superintendent. He's going to automatically share things. You know, this is why we need to put it on the agenda, and he shares it. And so, you know, what happens is, you know, maybe she's talking to Mrs. Sharon, and she says, oh, yeah, the superintendent says thus and so. And then the others didn't hear it. And so, the dissemination of information is not equal. So, what I suggested was that they have a co-chair, and that they would take turns sending out, you know, if there was anything that was said that they think is general to the whole. But I guess what you're saying is that would not be, that would not be in keeping with the, it would have to be ministerial coming from the superintendent.
It would, as I said, it triggers those three indicia. There is a Superior Court case where a, it was a planning board member, I believe. A planning board member couldn't make it to a meeting and sent an email to the rest of the board saying, I can't make it to the meeting, but here's the way I think about something. And the Superior Court said that was a violation of the right-to-know law. I think in what you're talking about, you know, when I think that through, if I give you the cautious answer, the cautious answer is you've triggered the three indicia, and therefore, it's easy to make the argument that that's a right-to-know, that a meeting. But, you know, perhaps one thing, you know, you could have the chair do a report at the public meeting that just indicates, you know, that, you know, the things that you're talking about. So, the superintendent is giving, I'm assuming you're getting a superintendent's report. So, you know, perhaps the superintendent is requested to indicate certain things. But I think the chair could also... I think the chair could also share things at the public meeting that maybe it would be more questionable if it was done in between the meetings.
One of the, may I, I'm sorry, one of the things that I have, that I think on, whether right or wrong, and maybe you can tell me how wrong it is, you know, that the board doesn't have an opportunity, like as the nine of us, we both, we get together for the agenda, and we get together for the committees. But as far as discussing a topic or everything, especially in the pandemic, when we have meetings, they're so crammed full that we come in late to meetings like tonight, and we really did an injustice to the prior meeting, because we didn't finish the conversation there. And so, it just seems to me that the board never has an opportunity to really thrash out ideas. And so, that was part of my thinking was, but obviously, it gets, it's not simple.
It's a cost, it is a cost of having an open and transparent government, that when you have a governing body, it has to happen at a meeting. And that's why in some, you know, some states, in Massachusetts, you have several cities that have full-time school boards. And it's because they have to meet, you know, every day or every other day. But we rely on what is largely a volunteer board. I mean, I don't think any of you would consider yourselves well-paid for this position. So, it's a volunteer board. You meet according to the right-to-know law in a public session that's open to the public at a place where the public can attend. And that's what an open and transparent government calls for. But the cost of that is, you, sometimes your meetings become less efficient, because you can't do the preparation work. And that's where you want to rely on your committees. So, committees are supposed to be doing the homework and bringing you the package, so you can look at the package. You might have some questions about certain things, but you have to rely on and respect committee work in order to make your meetings more efficient.
But those things that aren't, when you're saying that, I think of the pandemic. We don't have a pandemic committee. But there have been many times when I would like to have just sat and discussed all of the different options, all of the different things that's going on in the community, all of the, these are what I consider solutions, these are what you consider solutions, this is, and like I think of, you know, I, in this pandemic, I tell people, a lot of the decisions we make are made for us. From my perspective, the CDC has authority over the health, I mean, and our health, the health people here in Nashville. Those people have a lot of authority and a lot of, I would say it's even more than influence. To me, if, CDC is, you know, these are people who have, who have been given authority over the health of our nation, of our cities and towns, whatever.
Well, I had, I just, you know, just thinking outside of that area, if you have a middle school sports team that wants to play soccer, that independent authority is going to require that each player wear a mouthguard. That, and if you want to play the game, you have to wear that mouthguard. And so, you know, we've got those kinds of things all over the place. But I think on your point with the, if, the way to do that is either have a committee, as, you know, you didn't have a pandemic committee. Some districts had, they called it the reopening committee, or what, have it back-to-school committee. Or you schedule a separate special board meeting, or special public forum, to have that discussion. And that way, you take it out of your ordinary agenda. But those are the, you know, those are the ways to, you know, open up that conversation. You've got a list of things that you need to do as a board, and so, you need to address those things. And sometimes that, you know, the need to get things done, you're putting larger conversations aside. But if you need to have that larger conversation, there's nothing that prevents you from having a special meeting, just like tonight.
But, so, with administration or with, again, it goes into the administration, usually, like with the committee meetings, you always have administrators there, and it takes up a lot of their time. And right now, I think their time is precious. We're very shorthanded, and so, but it's all right. Thank you for opening our thinking, even. That's a beginning to wisdom, is it not? So, your thinking is valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out that Ms. Brown had to leave at 6:45.
Want to take over?
Yeah.
All righty. So, moving on beyond sort of the overarching theme, themes that Will talked about on the first number of slides, we're getting into more of sort of what I'll call the buckets of roles and responsibilities for school boards. When we developed sort of this version of this training, and, you know, we always tweak it and always change it a little bit, but the current version that we're, the version that we're using now has its genesis in probably 2015 or 16, I'd say. And in reviewing the laws and reviewing the Department of Education rules, we, you know, we categorized the primary key functions, the primary roles and responsibilities into about seven or eight, again, I'll call them buckets, or topics, or categories, if you will. Is it comprehensive? Probably not. You know, there are thousands and thousands of pages of statutes and Department of Education rules, and rules from other state agencies, Department of Labor, and things of that nature that impact public schools on any given day. But the first primary role and responsibility, and this is more aspirational than necessarily is operational, but I like to put this sort of at the beginning when we get into those buckets, just as a gentle reminder to board members as to why, why school boards are important, what the primary role and responsibility is. This is RSA 189 colon 1 dash A. It shall be the duty of the school board to provide at district expense elementary and secondary education to all pupils who reside in the districts, and there's some other language at the end of that statute. But it's just a nice reminder that, at the end of the day, you know, your primary focus should be on what's best for kids, whether or not we're talking about the policy, whether or not we're talking about a budget, whether or not we're talking about, you know, curricular materials, extracurricular, you know, materials, clubs, and sports, and athletics. How does this impact kids? Should always be the first question that you ask yourself, and then you make a decision moving forward. But anyway, I always like to just highlight that the statute, the law says, you have a duty to provide an education to all the kids in your district. Moving into some of the more operational aspects, I'm just going to pull this all up at once. NHSBA advocates that, you know, at the most base level, school boards are policymaking bodies. And that's not just my opinion, that's what the law says, both statutes and Department of Education rules. School board's primary role and responsibility is to set and establish policy. Why is that so important? Policies express the guidelines and philosophical statements which chart the district's course of action. Adopt policies to advise staff and the school community of legal requirements. And when we say the school community, that's really everybody in the city, isn't it? You familiar with your policy manual? We've got section A. Do you use the numbering, or you use the lettering? You use the letters now? Good.
Yeah, we flipped over.
That had to be quite the task, I imagine.
We're still in the process.
Because I remember about 15 years ago, doing some policy work for the Nashville Board, and you were using the number system at the time. But anyway, so you're, so who do you, think of, think of the policies that, you know, your administrators are implementing every single day. We have policies that deal with students. We have policies that deal with staff. We have policies that sort of self-regulate the board itself, agenda-setting policies and things of that nature. But we also have policies that affect the community at large, right? If the Boy Scouts want to, you know, rent out the gymnasium on a Saturday, we have policies that are deal with renting facilities. We have policies relative to visitors in school. You have to sign in, you have to make an appointment, you have to get the badge, or whatever it might be. You have budgets on your policy. So, the school community is really everybody in this city, isn't it? You have policies that have addressed staff, students, parents, administrators, the board itself, but you also have policies impacting the larger community. So, just want to, you know, let you know that it's not just insular, it's outward as well, too. Policies create the framework within which the superintendent manages the district and the staff discharge, their assigned duties. And many policies or policy subjects are specifically mandated by state or federal laws or regulations. And just for some of the newer people, maybe, you know, we, NHSBA categorizes our sample policies into three different categories. We have policies that are required by law. There's about 70 or 75 of those. Oh, I didn't know that, that was on a slide. Fantastic. So, we have over 70 policies that are required by state and federal law, with 26 specifically required by Department of Education Rule 306.04A. That is the minimum standards for public school approval rule. Basically, this, the rule that, was everything that needs to be done in every school, in every school district in the state, from assessment, curricular instruction, to what your math program looks like, your world language program's going to look like, credits, policies, plans, staffing requirements, homework policies, you name it, it's in the minimum standards. So, we have required policies, and about 70 of those. Then we have a whole bunch of what recommended policies, where the law won't say the school board shall have a policy, but it's, will say the school district shall do this, or the school board shall do that. So, it's not requiring a policy, but, you know, if the law's directing you to do something specific, it's probably a good idea to have a policy. So, those are our generally recommended policies. And then, our optional policies are, the law doesn't require a policy at all, it's more operational. We develop those based on requests from members.
Excuse me.
And we keep a number of them just on file. So, if somebody calls and says, do you have a policy on X, we've got one on file, ready, ready to provide them.
Ms. Johnson, there's a question.
Yep, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I keep saying that we need to have a mask policy for our children in school. We don't have one. We don't have one for kids that have religious exempts and/or medical exempts, because we're having problems, kids that have medical exempts are being told to leave the school if they have the mask, they can't wear the mask. We don't have policies. We have a motion. We have a motion for the public now, but we don't have a policy. So, if parents or the public want to come back and say, where's your policy, all we can do is show a motion. Shouldn't we have a policy on the books right now, even if it's a temporary policy for the masks, for the, for our students, and for our community?
If the board has taken a vote on a particular thing, then it, remember I talked, and it was on the last slide, the big P and the small p? So, the big P is a permanent document that you're putting in your manual. Some districts have adopted temporary policies that have a sunset provision. So, this policy shall remain in effect until blankety-blank date, unless, you know, extended by the board. But other districts, rather than create a, you know, a policy that goes in its manual, it approved its reopening plan, and then it approved adjustments to the reopening plan, and then adjustments to that reopening plan. So, when the board approves that document, or that framework, that's a policy decision. So, I don't know if you have or haven't, but, you know, NHSBA has not done that, because every district in every, you know, every, every town, every district, every building has different needs, different resources available. So, it's not something that we can simply say, here, do this. I mean, we could put, the board, the board adopts the following policy on masks, and then just leave it blank. And I can assure you that you could go town to town to town to town, and you'll find four different mask policies. But that's a, that's a local board decision, so that's one that you have within your authority.
And to your larger question, just one second, Ms. Johnson. I don't know if any boards that have specifically adopted little P, big P policies relative to anything pandemic-related. As Will said, I think most of these operationally have gone within reopening plans, or whatever phrase your district or your board may have been calling it. Do you have another question?
Well, I guess so, because, I mean, when parents ask for a policy, we're saying to them, here's the motion. And now, you've got to go back through pages and pages and pages.
Of minutes, right.
To find the motion.
No, it's in our, it's in our reopening plan about the masks, so they just have to refer to the reopening plan like you guys were stating.
But we don't have anything about kids on 504, and IEPs, and religious exempts, do we? No, we don't. We have it for the public now, because lawyers and the Board of Aldermen, I guess, suggested that that had to be done for reasonable accommodations. But we don't have that for students, because I'm hearing from parents, and we've heard from parents sitting in the audience about what's happening in school.
If a child, if a child was receiving special education services, or is on a 504 plan, the special education services of the 504 plan would certainly be taken into consideration relative to that student's needs under the reopening plan.
It's not.
But I think the answer be-
That's a different issue, though. That's a, that's a different issue.
That's why I'm asking, should there be a policy in place so parents can see it other than the reopening plan, because things have happened differently from the reopening plan to now.
But I think, so that was, I said that boards, first they approve, some boards didn't even, they just relied on the administration to do it. But not only did they approve the reopening plan, but they've made adjustments, at least, there were two big adjustments. One just happened after the CDC changed the guidance in December. So, multiple boards have been reviewing their reopening plans and then changing, you know, the, some of the provisions. So, that is an ongoing, and that's also one of the reasons we didn't put it in our manual, is because it's an evolving situation, that, you know, month to month, week to week, sometimes day to day, that the circumstances are different. So, that is something within the board's prerogative. And if the board wants to establish a provision on a certain, you know, create a religious exemption, that's-
Under the optional policies, things that are operational.
But I think, I think in regards to this specific topic. I'd like to keep it kind of general, so that the new board members learn how to run the board and how to be on the board. I think this specific conversation is probably best left with Dr. McKinney, and we can consult with you guys later, but I think for the purposes of tonight, sticking to the basic training is going to be best for our timeframe. But, Ms. Johnson, please feel free to reach out to Dr. McKinney about that, and we can bring it back to the board if we need to. Sorry, thank you, guys.
Sure. I just wanted to go back to the different categories, and notice the blue box on the bottom, and I think Barrett referenced it when he talked about the recommended. But the required policies reflect that there's either a regulation or a statute that specifically says the local board shall adopt a policy, or something to that effect. So, those are the required policies. Some of those, you know, the state requirement will simply say, the local board shall have a homework policy, and the homework policy shall describe how it relates to the grading system. But it leaves, you know, a wide area of discretion for the local board. And then, the recommended policies, as Barrett said, there's no statute that says you have to have a policy, that, it just says you have to do this. And so, this is a way to communicate legal responsibilities to staff and so forth.
Thanks. The second bucket of primary roles and responsibilities, and it's not in order of importance by any means, is to set and establish the budget and provide budget oversight. We apologize again, these slides are not specific to Nashville. You're going the wrong way.
Wrong way.
All right. That green really doesn't show up, does it?
You can read it down here.
Yeah, I put my sunglasses on, and maybe. But anyway, you know, the board, and I guess establishing the budget is perhaps a misnomer both in cities and towns. My understanding, you're a dependent school district, the city council establishes the budget. I presume you give them a proposed budget, though, and there's some back and forth and conversations. And I presume that's the same with collective bargaining agreements as well. They have to approve the collective bargaining agreements. But anyway, even though, you know, even though, ultimately, say, Nashville is, you know, with the city council, or the Board of Aldermen, I apologize, whatever, whatever, I know every city's a little bit different in what they're, in what they're called. You still have budget responsibilities. You develop a draft budget with your administrators and your business manager. I presume that there's some level of budget oversight at every meeting. You're getting fiscal reports, you're tracking line items from time to time. I don't know if this is, if it occurs here, but you may have to transfer money across line items from time to time, where you planned to plow the driveway 10 times, but it was a bad winter, and we had to plow it 30. Or you budgeted at heating oil being $2.50 a gallon, and now it's $4 a gallon. You know, any number of certain circumstances that can-
You have a pandemic.
Yeah, you have a pandemic, and have to buy 10,000 laptops over the course of three So, anyway, there are obviously a number, a variety of influencers that come into play with your, with your budget. But, you know, the other thing in terms of establishing the budget, and Will talked about this a little bit earlier when we first started, so I won't, I won't belabor the point, but your budget is a reflection of- point, but your budget is, is a reflection of, of your policies. You know, are you going to, you know, put money into the football field, or are you going to, you know, to, to create a new football field, or are you going to hire five more paraprofessionals in, in one of your elementary schools? Are you going to hire an additional guidance counselor in one of your elementary schools to help these kids coming out of the pandemic? Or are you going to put a new roof on one of your facilities? These are hard decisions, you know, and sort of getting back to the primary role and responsibility, providing an education, and every, every question that you have, how does this impact kids? And, you know, it's difficult, we understand that, because you're trying to do everything, but you're doing, trying to do everything within a limited budget, and with, you know, with, with, with limited resources. But the policy work, obviously, you know, primary role, role and responsibility of school boards as well, too. And I think you have a fiscal committee on the board, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, you have a fiscal committee that I presume does some of this stuff. Yep, people nodding their heads, and I have no idea what that last slide said, so.
There you go. Oh, sure. So you remember back, you know, slide number one, governance, management, and one of the responsibilities of, of the board is to provide oversight of the administration. That's how, you know, it, it helps make sure that the, the, the school district is run well. So once you've approved your budget, you know, a lot of the, by a lot, I mean virtually all of the decision-making is being done on a day-to-day basis in, within the administrative offices. So how is it that the board provides the oversight? And there's, there's a couple of statutory provisions that, that relate to that. So first of all, is your, your manifest review. Every district has its own way of doing that, and boards, some boards are very, very involved in manifest review, and some have a, a more cursory approach to it. The only thing the statutes say is that the treasurer shall make payments after approval of the board, or a, you know, a subcommittee of the board. That's all the statute says. So how the board actually does that is really a function of, you know, local school boards. Many, many boards follow the town and city statute that, that lays out manifest review, but, but there is no statute for school boards. So it's, it's really specific to, you know, how detailed you're going to get into that, that, that process. The next one is the line item transfers. So Barrett referenced that a little bit, but when the, when you, you establish your budget, you've got a source codes and so forth in your budget, and you need to move money from one place to another, that requires a, a approval of the board. The NHSBA policy gives a prior approval to the administration for transfers up to 5,000. That hasn't been changed in maybe 15 years, and that applies to little tiny districts that have 30 kids. So the same sample policy is there for that, you know, the little tiny district in Nashua. Many districts have increased that, that sort of prior approval to, I, I think the, the largest one I've seen is $25,000. So in other words, the superintendent makes that transfer, and then reports it to the board, and that, that suffices. Anything above that amount, however, would require prior approval. So that's another place where a board has discretion over how involved it's going to be in the, in that oversight. You know, the, the year of the pandemic, every district had just a huge number of transfers. But in ordinary times, there's, auditors are looking for, depending on the size of your budget and the, and the circumstances, they're looking for, you know, a sort of a norm for transfers. You shouldn't have too many transfers. I'm not going to say how many, because that's not my, you know, especially in a city the size of Nashua. But, but, you know, fiscal responsibility is part, part of that is preparing your budget, and you're relying on administration to help you prepare the budget. And if you're having to do many, many transfers without, you know, obvious causes, then you need to maybe provide more oversight, maybe some more resources, more personnel to make sure things are done well. And then the last one, and, and you always have this ability, requests for reports and information, and by, by that I mean your board. Not, you know, you, you can't have, how many, what do you have, nine members?
Nine.
You can't have nine members, you know, making demands on individuals in the, in the business office every day. So usually, it's your fiscal committee that, or finance committee, you know, has, is that sort of direct liaison. But asking for information and reports from administration is an appropriate way to provide oversight, you know? So wait a second, that doesn't make any sense, we budgeted this much, how come we're doing this? You know, I thought we approved the, you know, five more paraprofessionals, why are we, you know, building new things in the football stadium, or something? So those are things that the board can request and ask for information, but that's how you provide that oversight.
Can I ask a question about that? So if it goes through, if it goes through the finance and ops committee, then when they're setting their agenda, they can ask that. But if it's outside of the committee, and it's somebody not on, not working on that, that request really needs to go to the superintendent, because we can't jump over him and ask other administrators to do something for us unless it's dictated from the committee.
Correct, yeah. I mean, any request for information should go to the superintendent, and the superintendent will delegate it to whoever it might be, whether you're talking about the, the business manager, the special ed director, the high school principal, whoever it might be.
Right.
You know, accounts receivable, or whatever. But, you know, there's a, you know, I can't speak for the, just the size of Nashua. It functions very different than many other districts, and the complexity of it sort of demands even more a sort of hierarchy type thing.
Yep.
So, you know, your, your best situation is the finance committee is honing in the information request that it gives to the administration, so the administration's not running in 50 different directions. But, you know, if an individual board member, within reason, you know, is puzzled over something, you know, gets the information packet, there's nothing that would stop just calling and asking a question in, in general. But, but there are times of the year where that, even that can be an unreasonable thing just because of the time demand. So that's something, you know, that your administration and your board and its committees sort of have to work out what works best. I mean, that, you know, there are situations where unfortunately, boards, you know, need to pass a, a policy restricting the board member from contacting the BA because the board member was calling 14, 15 times a day. And, and so the BA couldn't get the work done. That, that is not a situation you ever, ever want to have. So it's really, you know, you have to provide administration the time and the resources to do the job you hired them to do. But at the same time, the board, in order to govern, needs the information it needs to make, and the individual members need the information to make those decisions. So you have to, you know, find the path that works for you, and, and put in the barriers where they need to be, but try to, you know, accommodate reasonable requests and so forth.
Just, just for reference, we do have that policy here in Nashua, VCBA, all requests have to go to the superintendent. You know, it, a lot of times, they can go to the president, and then the president will bring them to the superintendent when they meet, and perhaps put them on the agenda. But for little things, just send it to the superintendent. I feel like he must get so many emails.
Yeah.
So.
So any, any other budget or fiscal type? So the, you want me to do that one?
Go ahead, do this one?
Yes.
All right. The third bucket or category, hire and evaluate the superintendent. My understanding, you're, you're in that process right now, I, I hope it's going well. NHSBA is doing a number of searches as well, too. I know how challenging they can be. You get different thoughts on committees, and, and different personalities on committees, and different candidates, and so anyway, I, I hope it's going, I hope it's going well for you. The more important aspect, though, is, is the evaluation of the superintendent. There is a legal requirement that the superintendent be evaluated. It's under the last bullet point, Department of Education Rule 303.01K. The board is required to evaluate the superintendent annually. Again, there's no prescribed tool. We get the question a lot, excuse me, at NHSBA, of whether or not we have a rubric, or a template, or a matrix, or something along those lines to, to help, to help guide boards through this process, because it's, it's not easy. I'll tell you, I've, I've searched high and low. I've talked to, to colleagues at other state school board associations to see if they have one. There are some okay ones out there, there are some not okay ones out there. We keep on file, I don't know, maybe a half dozen or so, four or five that are okay. But what I've learned more than anything, because we get this question all the time, my opinion is that the best evaluation tools or processes are developed locally, because, you know, working with your board and your superintendent is going to be very different than if you were in a small town with, you know, a, a three-member board, or a five-member board, which is the reality of it. You know, there are 1,000 different varieties and 1,000 different flavors of what an evaluation can look like. Some districts do a 360, where you do surveys out to the community, or to the administrators, or to the staff, and then the school board. Other boards will create a subcommittee, maybe three board members, to, every, you know, every board member is allowed to, you know, submit their, you know, their personal review. But then it's aggregated, you know, and then sort of to, total results are, are provided to the superintendent, and then, and you have a conversation about that. So there are 1,000 flavors that, that it can, that it can, can, can go. What I would tell you, you know, if, if, when you get, if it's Dr. McKinney, great, if it's a new superintendent, start in July having that conversation about, about what it's going to look like, and how you're going to do it, and what the process may be. The related aspect, which isn't on the slides per se, that I think is really the, the starting point of, of a good evaluation process, is you have to do goal setting with the superintendent. Most boards, or many boards, do a retreat with the superintendent, usually after the school year, you know, first or second week of July, where they, they, it's, it's likely a public, it's a public meeting, but, you know, they'll do it in a more informal setting. And oftentimes, they'll have that conversation about what is, what are the goals for the next year? Or, you know, if it, if, you know, a superintendent who may be a three-year contract, you do three years' worth of goals. All right, this one can be done in six months, this one's going to take 18 months, this one's going to take three years to accomplish. But the goal setting at the front end is then what can help drive the evaluation. That's what you're evaluating the superintendent on, the goals that, that, that you've established. And that may be, you know, you know, hiring more staff, whatever, whatever the goals may be here in Nashua, fiscal-related, educational curriculum and assessment, you know, related. It may be with facilities, it may be whatever, whatever it might be, which is why develop locally is, is often the best place to go, just because the needs of each district are going to be, are going to be, are going to vary greatly from one another. I'm also a fan of doing a couple mini evaluations throughout the course of the year. Many boards will do a single, you know, summative evaluation in like a, a May timeframe. Don't do that. Do, do the goal setting in the summer, check in October 1st-ish, you know, school's been open for a month or six weeks, or whatever, and you check in, where are we on these goals? Are you making progress? What does the superintendent need from the board to help be successful in reaching those goals? And then you check in again in, you know, maybe a February, you know, every three or four months later. And then you get to the end of the school year in a May or June, and then you aggregate that stuff, and you do the final annual, the, the more formative total, total evaluation. Those are just my thoughts and opinions on it. How it happens is different district to district. So, but, but make sure that you've got a robust system, you know, moving forward.
Barrett, one thing that sometimes we, we overlook in this discussion, and, you know, I, I was in private practice representing districts for a long time, this is an important thing. Be familiar with your superintendent's contract and the timeline within that contract. Because quite frequently, the superintendent's contracts are going to require, you know, six months' notice, or something like that. So if they're, you know, when you're setting your calendar, it, you know, unless, unless you're really happy with the situation, but it, you know, you probably don't need to be mindful of it, but if you, you know, if things aren't going fantastically, then you want to be very careful with what that timeline is. You don't want to, you know, have your, the end of your evaluation in May, only to figure out that you were supposed to give the notice by November 1st. I mean, there was one school district two years ago, they were supposed to give it by August 1st of the previous year, which is, to me, not a great idea, because now you've got, you know, an unpleasant situation for a long, long time. But just be mindful of that when you're creating your calendar. And, and, you know, one of the, I think Barrett mentioned that, you know, each district is maybe going to have different goals and objectives. Well, it, it's also the case that if you've got a superintendent for five years, you know, what those goals and objectives look like in year one look very different in year five. So it's an evolving thing, and you want to, you know, a starting point template, but you want to work on that, not just fill it the same thing year after year.
Ms. Julio?
Hi, I just wanted to comment on that, if I may. We've struggled with this. Several of us have been on the board now for the last two years, some longer, and, and the evaluation of the superintendent has been a problem for us. And I, and I appreciate what you said about developing the guidelines locally. I happen to be the recording secretary for a school committee in Massachusetts, and they do the quarterly evaluations, and, and they also have goal setting and evaluations for their school committee members as well. And it, it seems to me that that only makes sense, because if you have expectations and you're trying to meet a goal, you don't want to wait 11 months to tell someone that they're falling short.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that we're in the process of hiring a new superintendent, and I think it's incumbent upon us to actually do something about this, so that we start off on the right foot with our new superintendent.
Do you guys recommend having a policy? Because I, I was kind of hoping that we could, we could do that at some point, where we identify what assessment tool we're, I'm probably doing the same thing that Ms. Johnson was doing, this is probably a really specific conversation that I could have with you.
You know, I mean, we would, I think the policy just says the superintendent will be evaluated annually.
In our, so we have a policy CBI. And then we have two models.
Yeah.
That are, they're two different ones, but they're common.
Yep.
And they're especially good if your board is, just needs a starting point.
Yep.
But it doesn't really get, you know, into that, that more, I, I think, helpful process that, that was just described. But those are CBI, F1, and F2. They're just samples, but as Barrett mentioned, we do have other ones available. But I, I, I would think, you know, you know, create a committee to look at that, that is working at the same time that your hiring committee is, you know, you're focusing on your tools, so that when the new person comes in, the expectations are there, everybody understands them, you're on the same page, and then you've set up a schedule to make adjustments, you know, as the, the year goes on.
Also, just one last bit. We're also having initial conversations with one of the consultants that we do about trying to ramp up some of our services that we can offer to boards about superintendent evaluation. So we, we're just having the conversation now, but we're hoping to plan a webinar at some point in the late winter, early spring, about tips and processes, and getting started, and things of that nature, so.
Thank you.
So I, I, I mentioned before that, you know, most of the time, you're making your policy decisions, whether it's a budget decision, or a mask decision, or creating a, you know, Title IX policy that's required by federal law. And in all those instances, you're, you're acting in what's called a legislative capacity. There are some instances, however, where you have a different function altogether, and there are different rules about conflict of interest, and there's different things that happen if, if you, you know, cross the line relative to conflict of interest. But that's when you're conducting hearings. Different, different types of hearings, when you're acting in that capacity, you're acting in what's called a quasi-judicial capacity. There, there, here's six examples, but there, there are many more, some that you may have created by policy, but the most common for students, expulsion, that you may have created by policy. But the most common, for students, expulsion, long-term suspension. Long-term suspension, you'll probably see less of now, because there's a 20-day limit, and really, you know, fitting that into a school board schedule is a, you know, a little more complicated. But expulsion is a big one. And then manifest education hardship, you might encounter for employees, dismissal, non-renewal, labor grievances. And in all these cases, you're not acting as a policy decider. You're deciding a case based on the information that's presented to you at a particular hearing. So you have, in those instances, you as the board are acting as the judge and the jury. And you are the ones who are providing due process to whoever, whichever individual's at stake. If you look back at, you know, that last slide, each of those instances, you're talking about a particular individual, and his or her rights, or his or her interests. And so, in that case, you're deciding about one person, not about just, you know, policy-type things. So when you think about due process in our society, you know, the two basic things are fair and impartial judge, jury, and the ability to hear, challenge the evidence and the testimony that's being used relative to your case. And that begins to create sort of a, you start to be able to see where one of those places the distinction between administration and governance, even though this is judicial as opposed to governance. But you must be free from bias and prejudice when you're deciding someone's case. So that means that you really can't have a lot of information before you get to the hearing. And when I get to the end of this slide, I'll go back to that. So the underscore, the need to remain separated from investigations and fact gathering relating to individuals and students, students and staff. But that separation does not require board members to be completely in the dark. But the more information you have, the harder it is to assure that the case is decided upon just that information. And it makes it much, much easier for attorneys, whether it's for staff, or for students, to claim that you were biased, and therefore you shouldn't have sat on a board. And remember, I said that the effects of not disqualifying yourself in a judicial case are different than a legislative case. If you could have nine members, and it could be nine-to-zero vote, but if you should have disqualified yourself, the court's going to send it back, or the arbitrator's going to send it back, or the PLRB's going to send it back. Now, that can be a real problem if you're talking about, you know, maybe, you know, a teacher issue that goes on for a year and a half, two years. Now you have to come back and do it all over again. The witnesses aren't there, that, you know, they graduated, or they went to a different employer. So it's very important to do what you can to make sure that the information you're getting is at a need-to-know basis. You might be the one who got that first phone call. So that, you know, the parent knows you, you live across the street, so they called you, because you're the face that they know. That doesn't immediately put you in a conflict situation, but what you do when you get that call is you identify what the issue is, and who it needs to be reported to. Nine out of 10 times, that's going to be your superintendent, might be your title coordinator. But, you know, if you send it to the superintendent, that's going to start the process correctly. Where you start to get into a problem is starting to ask questions that you really don't need to ask. Well, who else saw this? Have they had problems in the past? What's their family like? You know, those are not things you need to know. You just need to know how to get it from your phone call to the people who need to begin the correct process. The other part that you want to know, and I think we get to this maybe a little later, but I'll bring it up here, is you want to know what your policy is for complaints. You can't really help them solve their problem, but what you can do is point them in the right direction. So number one, you get enough information so that you can pass it on to the right person. And number two, you tell them where to look. You know, I don't know if you have policy KEB?
We do.
But that's, know that one in your head, so that when they call, you say, "I will forward this to the, you know, the superintendent's office, but I invite you to go on our website and look at policy KEB, because that will help you understand what you should do." But so that's where you can help keep that sort of line, so if it does end up something in front of you at some point, you can be fair and impartial at that hearing. I think that's it on.
Can I clarify something about that? So, one of the things that we run into, kind of being a big school district, and I'm sure it's happening everywhere, but there's a lot of stuff happening inside the schools with students that are then posted on social media. And let's say we're in the grocery store, and Joe from across the street comes over and says, "Why, did you see that fight with the kids that was posted on, you know, the, not Instacart, the Instagram, whatever they do."
Facebook.
My age is showing. My dislike of social media is showing. But we really should not know about that. So when somebody comes up to us and says, "Do you know about this? Have you heard about it? What's happening?" We really should be saying, "That's dealt with with administration. If you have a concern about it, go to this person." But it's kind of the sign of a better board to not know the minutia of what's going on with the students, because then we can be better impartial judges if it hits us.
All you need to know is that there was a fight at the high school. You don't need to know who started it. You don't need to know the kids that were involved. You don't need to know, you know, if...
Or the outcome of what happened with the students.
The outcome. You don't need to know, you know, who broke it up. You know, all you need to know is there was a fight at the high school, and/or, you know...
If somebody got hurt, does that make a difference?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If somebody got hurt, does that make a difference?
I mean, yeah, to some degree. You know, the next example I was going to be was, you know, social media is a whole different aspect. But, you know, you're in the supermarket, someone comes up to you and says, "Why was the, why were there two police cars in front of the high school today?" You know, and the problem is, I mean, the real problem is, 20 years ago, you would have found out about it in due course. At the end of the day, the superintendent would have picked up the phone, called the board chair, called, you know, each of you. What happens today, though? It's on social media the second it happens.
Even if it's nothing?
And the school boards are the last ones to know, right? You've got jobs and kids, and you get home, and then, you know, you're the last ones to know about the fight, or the kid that got arrested for this, that, or the other thing, or whatever it might be. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, if the police or the ambulance have to show up, or something like that, or some kid had to go to the hospital for a bloody nose, you know, maybe you're informed of that. I mean, it's...
Yeah, so there, just drawing a distinction here, where you're getting the information from.
Right.
So usually, hopefully, if something is going to hit, you know, big on social media, you're getting some type of information from administration. And sometimes it's problematic, because, you know, the superintendent, and the assistant superintendent, and somebody else are all in a meeting. This thing blows up, they're in a, you know, three-hour meeting, and you're hearing it from, you know, from constituents and so forth. One of the later slides, where it's, you know, some pointers for new members, one of the things I highlight on there is, practice your stock answers. So what happens when, you know, the door is, you know, someone knocks on your door at 11 o'clock on a Sunday morning, you open the door, and it's a, you know, Nashua Telegraph reporter. You have to be prepared. You know, that's something that, you know, might come before the board at some point, so I'm really not at liberty to, you know, hear the information, or even discuss the information. I suggest you contact the superintendent, or if you have a PR director, the PR director, or HR director. Here, we'll throw Ms. Carey under the bus here. You know, depending on the nature of what it is. But have that kind of thing, you know. Somebody comes up to you as you're, you know, looking at the freshness of the avocados, and you're not thinking about the school board business. But, you know, just have, be prepared with, don't say no comment. You know, answer the call, just to let them know. Because I once had the situation where it made it sound like I was hiding under my desk. You know, could not be reached, or something. I was in Maine camping, you know. So, but, you know, at least acknowledge that you got the contact, but be, you know, be indirect, and then, you know, direct them to the people who should be answering those questions. Ms. Lamphier, I think you had a question?
Yeah, that was what my question was. Like, if people do ask you what's going on, and you have some idea, you still can't tell them, right?
It, well, so it depends on the, so, you're aware that the police showed up and hauled somebody out, you know, in handcuffs. I'm aware of that situation. It's being addressed by the administration. I'm not at liberty to discuss it. You should, you know, direct those questions to the, you know, whatever level it's at.
Great, thanks.
And you can, you know, just remind them that, you know, one of your responsibilities is to sometimes, you know, review this information in a judicial-type process. So you have to be, you know, uninvolved in discussions and so forth.
Even one of your other obligations is to maintain staff and student confidentiality and privacy issues as well, too. I mean, it's...
So I have another question. I'm not sure if it's similar, but it's not the same. We had, over the years, we've had people who have abstained from being on the NTU negotiating, or any of them, para, because they had been a para, or they had been a teacher, and they felt it was a conflict. Is that a personal decision they make, or is there policy on that, or what are your thoughts?
For the board member?
Yes, for the board member.
I'm not sure I quite understood it, but are you asking?
It was, in the case that I know, it was a wonderful teacher, and she just was concerned that people would think it was a conflict, so she abstained. But I just wondered if there's thinking on that, or if that's a personal decision that they have to ask themselves.
There's a lot of layers, complex layers. So the question you asked, or the circumstance that you gave, that related more to a legislative decision than a judicial one. And as I mentioned, sort of when you're acting in your judicial capacity, the rules are a little harder, a little firmer, and the ramifications of getting it wrong are greater. That said, the easiest thing to remember is that a direct, personal, or pecuniary benefit or interest should disqualify you from both things. And the question is, you know, what is a direct pecuniary benefit? And every single financial decision you make is going to affect you one way or the other, because you're a taxpayer. Or even if you, you know, didn't own property and you rented property, your rent is, you know, still going toward tax. So obviously, decisions you make are going to have some personal connection. Can you be a parent of a student and be on the school board? Of course. But that has a, you know, you're going to have a personal relationship with the decisions you make. The interesting one for me is, what if your spouse is a teacher in the district? Can you be on the negotiating team? I think most, if not all, school attorneys would say, "No, you should not be on the negotiating team." What about voting on the contract? But I think, do you ratify the contract before it goes to the city council?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So what about ratifying the contract? Can you ratify, can you vote on the contract? I lean against doing that. Some attorneys say, "No, that's okay," because it's still, it's sort of impacting this great body of people. But what, instead of a spouse, what if it's your adult child who lives out of the house? I would say that's not a conflict. You know, it may influence you one way, but there are many people who ran for their board seat with a very particular idea about whether teachers should get paid more or less. And the fact that, you know, somebody, so if your adult child outside of the house creates a conflict, what if it's a cousin? What if it's a, you know, so it's easy to make the connections. But if it directly impacts your finances in a way that's different than your other board members, then I think you're pretty close to that line. The, but then you also ask the question, is that a personal decision? Well, the appearance of a conflict can be as damaging as an actual conflict.
Yep.
And so, some people, you know, will feel one way or the other on that particular thing. And, you know, abstention should be used lightly, and abstention is different than a recusal. If you have a conflict, you should recuse yourself. You're not part of the conversation, you're not part of the voting. And abstention, you know, really should only be used because you didn't, you weren't at the meeting before where the predicate conversation occurred, and you feel like you don't have the right information. But even then, you know, maybe the solution is to ask for more time and delay the decision to the next meeting. But if that's inefficient, then perhaps the answer is just abstain. But a recusal is different. You are off the board for that particular issue. As to the personal decision part of it, when a conflict comes up, you as a board can only give an advisory vote to a particular member. You can't disqualify the member. The member has to disqualify him or herself. Hopefully, they make the right decision, especially in a judicial case, because as I said, the effect of participating when you shouldn't have is to reverse it and send it back. Whereas with a legislative decision, if it was a nine-to-zero vote, they wouldn't send it back. They would just take your vote off, and now it's eight-to-zero. So unless you were the deciding vote, you know, the ramification would be much different. That said, you know, again, the appearance of a conflict can be as damaging to the credibility of that member, and credibility of the board. So, you know, you've got to make each decision carefully, and if you should disqualify yourself, then do that.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate for us to ask the lawyer for the school board if he thinks we have a conflict of interest? Or is that something you should just discuss among board members, or?
It would be appropriate. The question is, does an individual board member have the ability to just call the district's attorney? And there may be, you know, each, there's a policy generally, because we don't want your school board members going out and incurring expenses on behalf of the school district that weren't approved by the school board. So it may be that the thing to do would be, you know, you call the chair, or you call the superintendent, and the superintendent, you know, directs you. Because that's an important thing, and it can have, you know, negative impact for the district as a whole. So as, you know, as counsel for, you can also call us, and we can give you our two cents, but if it's really specific, we, you know, will say, "Well, here's the general answer, but maybe you should try to talk to either private counsel of your own, or the district's counsel."
That's great advice. Thanks.
I would just like to say that I have had the privilege of doing that with, and I found you to be so helpful and so professional. And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I just want to point out the time. We are at 7:40. We had, I had kind of scheduled this meeting for 6 to 8. Are we on target for ending at 8, or are we a little farther now?
Well, we don't need to...
I mean, it's fine. I think this is interesting, so I could sit here all night.
To some degree.
We've wrapped a lot of it in.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, getting through the slides, no, but I think the conversation, I'm sorry. Getting through the slides, no, but I think the conversation has still been helpful. And the reality is, when we do this, not just with this board, but with many boards, we plan the two hours. And I think it's more beneficial for the board members to be able to ask what they want to ask. We have the slides and the materials, so if we, you know, you don't need us to read through them, you know, in order to, for you to get the general gist of it. And as always, if you want us to come back again on this topic or another topic, we're happy to do that as well, too, so.
Yeah. No, I think we're still good. And...
We do set these up in order of what we think are priorities. So as we get further on...
Well, yeah, and looking through the slides, going, "But I really want to talk about this." So I don't want to end just...
Want to talk about collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining, communicate with the public. I mean, I think up to maybe the learning curve for the new school board members.
That's fine.
Because that's something that we can have...
The rest of that is more about the superintendent and the interplay, but we'll, again, read that, read that on your...
Yeah, I was looking, they look pretty...
You just want to get any questions about collective bargaining?
I feel like we probably are going to have some of those.
An issue down here?
Yep.
So, and Will's going to handle whatever question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so as you know, because you're in the middle of it, it's the board's responsibility to negotiate contracts with their collective bargaining units. Most districts do that with a combined management and a school board and maybe even legal team. Some districts, it's just board members. I think, I'm only aware that two that do that, one of them does it because they're, they do their budget all by themselves, so they use consultants. They, like, there are no board members on the board negotiating team because the board approves its own budget. And then there was a small district that nobody wanted to be on the negotiating team, so some former board members liked doing it, so they did it. So there's no requirement that the board's negotiating team have board members, nor have administrators, nor have lawyers. It's up to the board to decide who's going to be on its negotiating team. The, I talked about that, subject to approval by the whole board. So one thing that's really interesting, there's two little things about, I want to make sure I... Two little things about collective bargaining teams that are, you've got to think about these things. When you're setting up your team, you have to keep in mind that if you're on the team and you reach a tentative agreement, you are required to support that agreement. That means that unlike most other places, you know, where you hear that expression that individual board members don't lose their rights to free expression, this might be one of those places. If you're on the negotiating team, you reach a tentative agreement, you must support the agreement, you must vocalize that support when asked, and you must vote in favor of it when it comes to the board ratification. And if, you know, a board thinks that, you know, there are people on the board that don't represent the majority, then the board should think about how they construct that team. The, and then the board member, him or herself, you know, should be very mindful. If they're going to vote to, on a tentative agreement as part of the negotiations, they need to take the obligation to support that seriously. They can't, you know, they can't change their mind, they can't say, well, I only voted for it to be done with the negotiations, because you have an obligation to negotiate in good faith. And if what you're going to do is negotiate an agreement and then, you know, vote against it, then the argument is you haven't negotiated in good faith. Doesn't mean you have to reach an agreement, but if you do reach an agreement, you have to support the agreement. Yes, Ms. Lamphier?
So if one member of the, let's say that you were the minority, it wasn't 100 percent. The person who, the person or persons who were the minority, they still have to agree with the contract, or they can vote against it and make known their vote? Defend their vote.
Again, there's three tiers of approval. So first, you have the negotiated tentative agreement, that's between the two teams. Then you have the ratification by the board, and then you have approval by the legislative body. So if the person on the negotiating team, you know, they reach a tentative agreement, that person on the team now has to support the tentative agreement.
Even if they were in the minority voting for the tentative agreement?
That's going to depend really on how the team was constructed and how the board was. But I think the answer is yes. There is not, there are multiple decisions where the court has made it clear that if you're on a bargaining team and there's a tentative agreement, it's bad faith on the part of the school district if one of its members from the negotiating team then doesn't support it. I would defer, if you've got that type of situation, I would defer to your, you know, negotiation or your labor council, much far more, you know, knowledgeable in this. And, you know, we don't do direct negotiation, it's an evolving thing all the time. But I would defer to a specific situation to them. But what I can tell you is, decision after decision, the court has said, if you're on the negotiating team, there's a tentative agreement, you're required to support it. That's what...
But if it doesn't go to agreement, let's say that the negotiating team sends it forward, and at the full board, it didn't pass.
If you reach an impasse, so a tentative agreement is the thing that comes out of the negotiating team.
Yes.
If you don't have a tentative agreement, then you have an impasse.
Mr. Claffey, who is on the phone, is letting us know he has some questions.
He speaks loud. Good idea.
I'm trying to hit you.
It's fine, we just, we like the train behind you.
So we're waiting for a question from somebody?
Mr. Claffey, oh.
Okay.
Ms. Lamphier had her hand up, and then I would...
Well, I'm not sure that you had finished mine, but if he wants to ask his question in the interim, it's all right.
I'm not, I think I got as far as I can go. If there's a tentative agreement and you're on the negotiating team, it is bad faith bargaining on the part of the district if one of the members thereafter doesn't support it. Now, there may be some circumstances where you work things out with the other side about how that's done. But I'm going to defer to your labor council for, you know, the sort of nuances for that. If you, all I can say is if there's a tentative, the Supreme Court has said, if you've got a tentative agreement, it's bad faith negotiating for one of the members of the negotiating team to thereafter vote against or not support the contract.
Ms. Lamphier?
Well, if it's not, again, going back to the unusual scenario. Let's say that it came from the team and it got to the second, to the board, to the full board. And at the full board, the full board reversed the decision by majority vote. I mean, it's a majority. You're still saying that those members, who can speak up and who cannot, or can nobody?
Well, if the board didn't ratify the contract...
But the negotiating team still has an obligation to support the contract in front of the full board.
That's, thank you, I think that's what I'm saying, and Mr. Phillips, right?
I thought you just said that the board rejected the contract.
No, the board, no, okay, there's a three-person negotiations team. They reach a tentative agreement, even though the vote is two to one. I'm just throwing out hypotheticals here. So it goes to the full board for ratification.
I do...
Those three members of the board still have, of the, those three members of the board that were on the negotiation team have an obligation to publicly support the tentative agreement that they negotiated.
That is my understanding.
The other six board members can vote no or yes, it's all, it's their own choice.
Right.
But that was a Supreme Court decision, is that what I hear you saying?
The Supreme Court did not get into that nuance about whether at the negotiating level it was two to one. So all I can say is what the Supreme Court did say, I can't say what it didn't say. And what it didn't have is it didn't have a case that decided that issue. The only issue that I'm aware of, and your labor counsel who does this for a living may have a different, you know, position on that, and I would defer to him for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
So as a member of the board who is not on the negotiating teams yet, does my opinion, does the negotiating team have to take my opinion and the opinion of other board members who are not on the negotiating team into, you know, into consideration when they're doing the negotiations?
Yes and no.
So there's some, there's some different levels of that. And I think when I talked about a board should be mindful when it's establishing its number, you know, number one, its negotiating team, and number two, the sort of direction and authority that it expresses to the negotiating team. So remember, you know, maybe you haven't heard this part, but there's this, you know, magic concept in New Hampshire of the non-meeting. And a non-meeting is something where you don't have to have a notice and you don't have to have minutes. And one of the reasons that a school board can talk without having a meeting is strategy about negotiation. So there is a, there can be a dialogue between them, but, you know, that's really a function of the school board and it's, the negotiating team is a committee. And a school board, when it creates a committee, is creating the scope of the committee's duties, the responsibilities, the authority, it all, you know, they're acting on behalf of the board. The, you know, the tricky part is, the board has to be careful when it's discussing the authority, because it's not, it's not a formal vote yet. So, yes, they should listen to you, they should hear your position, they should be mindful of what a majority of the board's position is, but you're not on the negotiating team. So there's, you know, yes and no is, I think, probably, you know, Barrett captured it pretty well.
If the negotiating team knows that a majority of the board won't approve the contract if they don't do something they want them to do, are they negotiating in good faith still?
Yeah, so I'm, again, I'm going to defer to your counsel on that, because you've really got to parse what the issue is.
In the hypothetical, if a situation like that were to arise, then the board members on that particular board need to sit down and have a conversation with one another.
I, so I negotiated contracts for a long time. And there were times when, you know, I might have a predicament in negotiations where I knew what the board wanted, I knew what, you know, majority of the team wanted, and I also knew what the obligations were relative to good faith bargaining. And that's where you either have a discussion with your board, or you have a discussion with the union representatives to see if there's a path forward. But, you know, each case is going to be different, each issue is going to be different. And all I can say is what the Supreme Court has said.
All right, thank you.
Did we have a question over here from somebody on the phone?
Thank you. Mr. Claffey, did you still have a question on the table?
Yeah, I had, I just want to clarify the last issue. So if the negotiating team does not reflect the majority opinion of the board, I think you said the solution is to have a meeting, the board needs to have a chat?
I would...
Yeah, I mean, the board, the board needs to regroup and have a conversation about what it wants to do with respect to negotiations.
Okay.
I mean, if there's a disconnect, if there's a disconnect between the negotiations, the negotiating team, and the remainder of the board, you got to have a, you got to have a conversation, and the board needs to get on the same page.
Okay, so then my other question was, I was just wondering if, you know of other boards, if other boards typically stay with the negotiating team, if no progress has been made, you have an election mid-negotiations. So do boards typically stick with the team, or after an election? Have you found that they sometimes change the team? Thank you.
Yeah, I want to, Will jumped in on that, but I guess part of the challenge with that is city-specific, because by the time town elections roll around in March, negotiations have been done for three or four months prior. So, I mean, has that happened with any of the cities that I'm aware? I mean, I can't, I can't think of anything, I don't recall any specific circumstances where I've seen that occur. If it has, I'm not aware.
So one thing I'm not aware of with the city charter is about appointment of committees. You know, generally with a committee appointment, that's at the pleasure of the board within its own policies. Some, some functions would be constrained by either the charter or sometimes statute. So for instance, in a, you know, a school board chair theoretically could be removed by a board. However, an SAU board chair, the, there's a statute that says the SAU board shall, and this would be a multi-district SAU, so it doesn't fit yours, but it's just an example. The statute says there's an organizational meeting that occurs, I don't know, by June, whatever it is.
April, April 1st.
April to May, so it's April 1st to May something. And at the organizational meeting, they appoint a chair for a year. So that is a term established by statute. Whereas for school boards in general, they're internally, how they create their committees and their internal officers and so forth, that's an internal operation and theoretically could be changed. But, you know, there are a few paths to how you move on when the board is not entirely in agreement. And I think you have to review those issues with your labor counsel.
Can I just, one final follow-up, please? So our board policy, section H titled "Negotiations," there is nothing to display there. There are, I don't know about the city charter, but if we look to what I think is our go-to document, there is no statement whatsoever about negotiations. What's your opinion on that?
I, yeah, I'm not sure I followed that.
I had a hard time understanding, just with the...
What the question was.
Yeah.
Can you restate that, Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, so the national school board policy documents, we have sections, letters, I think the president pointed out earlier about letters. So we have a section, it's titled "Negotiations," and there's nothing there.
Ah, okay.
There's absolutely nothing, nothing to refer to. That's all I was trying to ask about.
Yeah, so the answer is, there used to be several sample policies in there, but the collective bargaining process is, except for the creation of your team and how your team, you know, interacts with your school board, the statute is so specific that we've withdrawn most of our policies. And in fact, each board is going to handle that situation differently each time it has a contract come up. Sometimes you've got, you know, several board members who are just clamoring to get on the negotiating team for the teachers, but nobody wants to have anything to do with the support staff contract. So, you know, and I, how many associations, do you have, five, four, two, one?
How many bargaining units do you have?
Five.
Yeah, so you have, you know, five contracts, and I'm sure there's a lot of interest in...
Yeah, seven, sorry.
Seven, yeah, so there's more interest on some than others. Either that, or you have a negotiating committee and they do all of them. I know there's a couple of districts that do that, I feel sorry for those members, but...
Right, it's a lot of fighting in there.
But, yeah, so the reason, the reason the, what is it, the reason that section is devoid of contract, of policies, oh, not only is the statute specific, but your collective bargaining agreement also has a section about collective bargaining, and that would supersede your board policy. So if you somehow got a term into your collective bargaining agreement, that would supersede your board policy. And then the statute would potentially supersede both, or perhaps like fall in between.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. It is eight.
Jen, I think you wanted to talk about this a little bit.
The communicate with the public, yep.
I mean, we're here, it's the pleasure of the board, so...
And I think maybe, I think we, yeah, let's just finish up these last two slides, and then I'll get a feel from the rest of the board about if they want to reschedule or if they feel that they have a grasp on the rest of the presentation, or they can just reach out to you if they have specific questions.
And I know it's a few months away, but we'll be doing this via webinar beginning of May, I think we have it scheduled. I know it's a little far away, but it's just, I'm just letting you know that, you know, we're also doing this again as well, too.
Ms. Lamphier?
Well, I'm just wondering if, it seems to me if you came back again, how many, do, how many freebie, is this a freebie? How many freebies do we get?
They're all free, Ms. Lamphier.
They're all free. So at some point, are we...
Don't take advantage of it.
Well, then that's what, that's what I'm trying to avoid, to be honest with you, because...
We have boards that call us three or four times, you got to go out and do a training. So it's a part of a member service, we're happy to do it.
I just know how busy our staff is, and I don't want us to abuse the privilege.
Quite all right, quite all right.
I appreciate what you're doing, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you want to handle, do you want me to do this one? So communicate with the public. You know, when we talk about communicating with the public, and we've had some conversations about the right to know law, you know, but when we say communicate with the public, we mean something beyond just posting, you know, notice of your meetings and posting your minutes and taking public comment and whatnot. When we used to do our new school board member orientation, and when we would do it in person in Concord, we got 100, 120 new school board members at our conference room at our office building. And I'd look out, and you know, you can usually tell that, who the parents are on the board, because they're between, you can tell they're between the ages of 28 and like 40, right? And so I'd say, how many of you are parents with kids in the district? And, you know, three-quarters of the hands would go up. And so I'd say, so those of you that don't have kids within the school... And so I'd say, so those of you that don't have kids within the school, why did you run for school board? And the prevail, predominantly, the second most common reason other than having kids, and this is all anecdotal, other than having kids in the, in the school was, I wanted more information from my school board. I felt that they were making decisions impacting either our community or our taxes, and they were either not explaining why or not, or they were rushing through the vote. I wanted more better communication from my, from my school board. And sometimes I would ask, well, what, what does that look like to you? Because that's not, okay, more communication, they send out one newsletter a month, does that mean you want two newsletters a month? Or, you know, what are you trying to get at? And that's a little bit nebulous. And that's going to change, you know, from district to district. You know, what, what I will say, and I, I'm very mindful of making any particular recommendations on this because it's going to be somebody else's staff time and man-hours and resources and things of that nature. But it's easier today to communicate with people than it ever has been. I presume everybody in this room has a smartphone on them, right? And we have systems set up in our school districts where we can get text alerts if there's going to be a snow day or a phone call if there's going to be a snow day. And we've got, you know, so different social media platforms and email platforms and electronic notices and things of that nature. So, you know, to the extent, you, to the extent you can, you know, communicate more with the public, that's what they want. And obviously, the last couple of years, we've certainly seen that, right? You have more people attending public meetings now than we ever had before. When we were holding the meetings virtually, you'd get 200, 300 people on the Zoom call, right? Prior to the pandemic, how many people would you get at a, at a school board meeting? Five or six?
Four.
Right? And it was probably the same five or six people every, every meeting, exactly. So again, you know, I'm not saying go create a Facebook page. I'm not saying start sending out, you know, weekly updates from the board chair and it, because that's time and effort and that people don't necessarily have right now, you know, especially the nine of you and especially, you know, Dr. McKinney and Tara and the staff at the, at the SAU office. But if there's a way to, you know, and I think it's fantastic that you still provide, I mean, you were doing this before, though, the, you've got the TV option here. Obviously, not every school board or every school district has the resources or ability to do that. But I'm just saying that, you know, find ways to reach your constituents that maybe, you know, that may be different than what we've traditionally done. And again, I don't necessarily know what those are. You know, you know, talk to a PR person, maybe, you know, talk to, find a PR person that, you know, may either, I don't want to say keep them, you know, on a retainer because that can get expensive as well, too. But, you know, maybe it might be worth paying somebody some money to come in and just do a presentation to the board for a couple hours on, you know, how can we engage our public and engage our community and enhance our communications that don't, you know, increase time and effort and take away resources and man-hours and things of the, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, I'm not a communications specialist, but they're out there, you know? So, you know, social media is an easy way, obviously. You know, the text alerts and things of that nature, I don't know how those, you know, function operationally. But my point being is that, you know, you know, especially in times where we're still in a pandemic and there's questions about safety and quarantining and things of that nature that parents, you know, want to know about. So find a way to get the information out to them as, as best you can.
I'll just add a couple of layers to that. One thing that many districts do is they create a communication plan. And the, and the plan addresses different parts. So one is just general information, one is crisis.
Communication.
Plan. So there's different layers of that. But I just want to make a little clarification about the social media part. Barry's talking about the school board, not the individual members. As individual members, you don't lose the, the right to speak as an individual, but you have to be very, very careful that that's what they know they're hearing. If, you know, we, we don't think it's a great idea for school board members to get into, exchange comments online, but if they do, they, they do it on their own page, not on the community page. Because if you're on the community page and five of your members make comments on the same, you know, that same thread, you're having a meeting. Because you have, you're talking about school board business, you have a quorum, and you're able to communicate contemporaneously, even if one of you was over, you know, stirring, you know, doing something in the house and not really paying attention to every thread, you come back to the comments and you didn't even see the two of the board members, you know, interjected. So you stay off of the community pages. If you're going to do, you know, your public face as a school board member, you can have your own page. You should not comment on another board member's page. And as a board member, if you're going to have your own, you know, account where you address school board business, you need to make it crystal clear that you're speaking as an individual, you're not representing the board. If you look in the, so we really didn't get into right to know stuff, but the second packet, at the end of, so there, on page 17, there's a PowerPoint on right to know law overview. And I think, I want to say right, right near the end of that, there's some communication, electronic and otherwise practice tips. So it starts on page 34 of the, of the right to know package. And then it goes, it even includes, and then starting on page 36, there's individual board member engagement on social media with some comments and thoughts and suggestions. And then in the last, the last part of that section, so on page 38 of the materials, consider a disclaimer. So if you have a social media page where you're going to talk about school board stuff, you can pin a notice at the top of that page. And this is true on Twitter, it's true on Facebook. You pin that and you're, you're making it very clear. And no matter how far they scroll down, that thing is going to stay there saying, this is not the school board. So anyway, those are, just make, the school board itself probably should defer to the administration, but you can give direction to the administration as to which types of things you want the administration to be, you know, making available on the district website. School boards have tended to get themselves into hot water when the school boards try to do a, their own social media page because all of a sudden, without, you know, without intending to, they stumble into meeting problems or government records problems.
First Amendment issue.
Yeah, First, First Amendment, yeah. So your district webpage should not have public comment because you can't, you know, unless you decide that's what you want on there. So there's lots of considerations, but, but there's communication plan for your school board and your school district. And then as individuals, just be, you know, really careful to make clear that you're talking in your individual capacity. Yes, Ms. Zeeb?
Well, Nashville, you've already mentioned how large we are. And this year, we have had, the emails we get, this week alone, I got at least 25 letters from the NTU negotiations. And that, the pandemic, I wouldn't even want to guess how many, hundreds, thousands, I wouldn't even want, and there's just no way that one person can answer every one of those. But I personally feel that they should all be answered because they, because we are representative, going to your point about communicating with the people we represent. And so I had said that, you know, maybe we could take turns, each one of us do 20 or 25, and then the next 20 goes to the next one and the next one and so on. I don't know if you've ever seen that or if you have any comments about, I mean, obviously going to your comment about keeping them personalized and saying, these are my own opinions, not the other eight members of the board. Maybe that would make that difficult as well. So.
So it depends on, you know, some boards have, you know, board@nashua school district dot com. So the entire board has access to that page. And then, and then I suppose in, in that type of situation, you could do that. But others, it, more frequently, you have individual board members who have district-provided email addresses and somebody's writing to Sandra Zeeb. You know, they're, they're not writing to Paula Johnson. So Sandra Zeeb is the one who's responsible for doing something with that communication. And one thing, you know, I was talking to a school board chair the other day, and he says, when he gets a message from an individual constituent, especially if he doesn't know that it's been transmitted to the board, he says, do you want this to go to the whole board? Because otherwise, I'm, I'll.
I'm not authorized to.
I'll respond and, and if appropriate, I'll give it to the superintendent.
Yeah. That's a good answer.
You know, but, but I think the, the volume that you're talking about, you know, there, there are reasons why big cities have bigger administrations and in some instances, you know, higher stipends for school board members. But, you know, those are decisions that your.
Communications departments.
Communication departments. I mean, there are several districts in the state right now that are on retainer with PR firms. And, you know, I think there was one, somehow I got on the, you know, the message list for one of them. And, and, you know, there was a homework issue in one school. And I got a, you know, a PR notice from the school district because of this homework. Not, you know, not to be concerned, we were aware of this situation and this is what we did about it, you know? So, and, and, you know, that's, it's an expense, but it is a way for the, you know, the, whether it's the, the board or the, or the, the district. There is, there's at least one district in the state that has a board person, a staff person who does that as part of the job. So, you know, there are ways to address that, but, you know, without, you know, without adding resources or personnel, you're the, it's your name on the recipient list and you have to do with it what you feel morally obliged to do.
Can I, I have, I have two questions. Today, are you done, Ms. Zeeb?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
I mean, best practice is to probably respond to every email or just acknowledge that you receive it, but we don't have to.
No law that said, there's no law that says you have to. I mean, to the extent that you can be responsive to your constituents, yeah, it sounds like a good.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen, I've seen other, like I've emailed out to other people and I get back like, hey there, so great to hear from you, I'm super busy today, I can't respond to your email, but I'll get back to you as soon as I can. I know very well that that's the, I'm out of the office message.
Auto-response.
But I felt like they listened to me and that they're going to get back to me.
Right, right.
Well, except then, then you have, then when you get back from vacation, you got 943 of those.
Right, right.
So I think, you know, an acknowledgement is always.
Yeah, they didn't, they never got back to me after that fake message.
You know, so from time to time, we'll get a communication, you know, sometimes it's because they think that, you know, we can tell you guys what to do or something. We acknowledge that we received it.
Yeah.
And that's all we do. And so you might receive some emails where I'm not responding to that. At least acknowledge it.
And I'm sure everybody does this with their own work. Sometimes I get an email on, on a Wednesday and I, they're like, hey, I'm tied up the next three days, I'll try and get back to you as soon as I can. And sometimes you got to sit and return emails when you're watching football on a Sunday afternoon.
Yep.
You just, you have to do it, right?
And then I just want to go back to the social media piece. I know we have, there's, we have board ethics about, you know, once the board has made a decision or voted, that kind of sticks. It's not in the best, it's, it's not great to then go on social media and talk about how you disagreed with a board vote and why and what you think should have happened. That, that's bad practice.
So here's the way we express that sort of sentiment. Board, a board operates best when it operates as a team. For things that aren't near and dear to your heart, you participated in the debate, you had the discussion, you made your arguments known, you had a vote, you lost, you move on to the next agenda. If it's, you know, there may be some issues that that is not a poss, you can't do that. You are not deprived of your First Amendment right to express yourself. You just need to be clear that you're expressing yourself as an individual. You know, we, we think, you know, the more you can either be silent or be affirmative in your support, the more effective your board is just getting through things and the less disharmony you have and discord you have. But there are times when, no, I don't agree. I had a board member, so you guys don't have annual meetings, I don't know if you've ever seen what one looks like, but the board member felt very strongly that he should support the board actions no matter what, but then after nine years of being a board member, they hit one where he just couldn't do it. And he called me and he said, so how do I express myself at the annual meeting? I said, well, you, you can express yourself. And he said, but that just doesn't feel right. And I said, well, if you really, really want to, you know, separate your function, just get off of the deus, go around and get in line with the rest of the voters. And that's what he did. But, but, you know, boards work better when you work together. So do that as much as possible. And if there's an issue that you really, you don't lose your right to speak about it, but make sure that you, you know, people know you're speaking as an individual. And, and I did not vote in support of that budget and here's why. Don't point fingers at people.
No name-calling, no always and never, regular communication tactics, I assume. Okay.
Any other questions for us since we're here? I know it's getting late and been a lot of information to digest, but just want to make sure that, that everybody's good before we head out.
This has been really valuable, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
I learned a lot tonight.
Appreciate that. So yeah, talk amongst yourselves at another time if you would like us to come back and either finish this or do some right to know law or, or any other topic, you know, we're happy to do so. You know, schedules fill up quicker than you always often think they're going to, but talk, you know, talk amongst yourselves if you'd like to have us down again. You know, Jenna's chair, either reach out to me or have Tara do it or whatever. Always helps if you want us on, if you give me two or three dates, just so, you know, Will and I have other meetings and whatnot, too. But we're happy to come down at any time and we appreciate the invitation. And thank you as always for your membership.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, our pleasure.
So I would be looking for a motion to adjourn right now?
I'll move.
Ms. Johnson?
Second.
Oh, Ms. Gilio. Okay. And we do have phone calls, so we will have to do this by roll call. Ms. Raymond on the motion to adjourn. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Claffey? Is that Mr. Claffey? Mr. Claffey? Okay, I'm going to turn off the microphone there so it's not so bad.
Yes.
Yes for Mr. Claffey. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Oh, there it is. Thank you, Neil. I'm a yes. Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Oh, she left. Ms. Zeeb?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:19. Thank you all for coming. We'll see you next week.